All right, good evening. It is seven o'clock on Wednesday, August 31st, 2022. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I'd note for the record in attendance this evening are myself, William Ramsey Chair, Board Member Joe Fisher, and Board Member Liz Klein. If anybody could stand and face the flag of our nation, please.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight, I do want to take a moment to remember. Oh, thank you. I also want to note for the record that this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I see no one who's informing me of recording this evening, so moving on with other business. I want to start the meeting this evening by recognizing two tremendous volunteers who recently passed away. Unfortunately, on August 24th, Camilla Roundtree passed away. Camilla was the Director of our MEDCO program for over 40 years. She was so dedicated to the program that when the program first started, they didn't have a dedicated bus service for the students, and Camilla would drive her own car with the students back and forth to Hingham every day. She was involved with the Girl Scouts in town, she was a food bank volunteer, and she was a 2003 Hingham Citizen of the Year. And, you know, I knew Camilla because I had a lot of friends in the MEDCO program, and she had just a wonderful gift of working with children. And she was just such a nice lady. She was very visible within the school system every day, and I know that I'm going to remember her for not only her gift of dealing with children, but also for her kindness. And my heart goes out to the Roundtree family, her son Nick, who I know from my son's involvement with the Hingham militia. And I want to note that there will be services for Camilla on Wednesday, September 7th, from 4:00 to 8:00 at the Pine Cohane Funeral Home, and the funeral mass will be celebrated on Thursday, September 8th, at 10:00 o'clock at Resurrection. So with that, let me turn to my colleagues to see if they have anything they'd like to add about Camilla. So Joe, you want to go first?
So I only know from others what I've heard, and she will truly be missed by this community. And it's really appropriate that this board take the time to honor her memory. Thank you.
Liz?
Yes, thank you, Bill and Joe. Camilla was a legend in our community and certainly an inspiring citizen. All of the contributions that Bill mentioned, and I noticed that even in her passing, her legacy will continue with contributions to the Hingham High School Student Activity Account. So certainly, students will know her legacy and have her memory. So deepest sympathy to her family and friends. Thank you.
I do want to note that we have our school committee member, one of our school committee members, Ness Corente, here, who was a friend and neighbor of Camilla. And Ness, if you want to come up and add some remarks, that'd be great.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you honoring her in this way. I'm honored to be here on behalf of the school committee. I am heartbroken about the passing of Camilla Roundtree. Mrs. Roundtree was involved in the MEDCO program here in Hingham for over 30 years. She has been seen as a caregiver and mentor for so many MEDCO students during her time. One of those students was Carols Perez. Ms. Perez graduated from Hingham Public Schools and went on to get her law degree, and things came back full circle when she came back to the district to serve as MEDCO Director. Ms. Perez shared a letter with the school committee, and I thought it best represented Mrs. Roundtree's, so I want to share some of those words. Carols wrote, "It is with a heavy heart that I share that on August 24th, the Hingham MEDCO family lost its matriarch. Not only was this loss for the Hingham Public Schools program, but for MEDCO Incorporated and the Town of Hingham as a whole. She embodied the definition of a public servant and a woman of faith. When the program started in 1967, there was no school bus. It was Mrs. Roundtree using her family vehicle to pick up and drop off from Hingham to Boston. Well, in 2010, when I graduated, she was still driving me home after concerts or rehearsals. I know every alum will have a story driving of their own, but not only did she serve as MEDCO students and their families, she served her community. From driving vans, to serving as a Girl Scout leader, to volunteering for the food bank, and in her later years, sweeping all of Ward Street. All of this while raising her family. We were truly blessed, and no one will ever fill her shoes. Thank you to the Roundtree family, children and grandchildren who allowed all of the Hingham Public School MEDCO students to become part of their family. I think we can all say we have memories of '99 Ward Street, and it is thanks to all of your gracious acceptance. She will be missed and never forgotten, as her tremendous legacy lives through each and every family she touched." So in the letter from Carols, she shared the story about sweeping all of Ward Street, and that was not a typo or misspoken. Mrs. Roundtree had retired from Hingham Public Schools by the time I joined the school committee, but I was fortunate enough to meet and talk with her often as she was on her daily walks and cleanup. You see, I live on Ward Street, so she would literally go up and down the street cleaning our little part of the town. She was so friendly and positive and energetic that my husband and I couldn't help but fall in love with her immediately. We will be forever grateful for her contribution to our school and town. Rest in peace, Camilla Roundtree. The world is a better place because of you. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ness. I also want to note that on Sunday morning, another tremendous volunteer in our community, Jim Watson, passed away. Jim was a longtime member of the Hingham Housing Authority and was also involved with many different boards and organizations in town. You know, Jim, every time I would interact with him, always had a kind word or a smile on his face, and our community is at a tremendous loss knowing that Jim is no longer with us. So our hearts go out to Jim's family. This information regarding his service has not been posted yet, but I will advise people when that information is available. Joe, would you like to add anything?
Well, I just found out this evening, and I was really shocked. I'm still expecting to see him around town, and I know that's not going to happen now, so he will really be missed. Thank you.
Yes, certainly grateful to Jim's service to the Hingham community and heartfelt sympathies to his family.
And Tom has asked to say a couple words about Jim. I know you worked with him pretty closely on some-
Yeah, I appreciate it, Bill. So Jim was a longtime participant in all things Hingham government, which I love, right? He would come to these meetings, he'd sit right over there, often next to Carol Meyer of The Anchor at the time, or The Journal, and they would get up regularly during the meeting on any of five different random items, and Jim would have thoughts, comments, helpful suggestions, and he helped govern the town that way. And I love when residents participate like that. We all saw Jim participate at town meeting on a regular basis. He would regularly get up to the microphone and offer his thoughts. So I think that there's a life lesson for all of us to participate in our community the way Jim did, and all of our communities will be a better place for him. So Jim was a gentleman. I'll miss him, and I think, like Ness said of Ms. Roundtree, the world is a better place for Jim Watson, for sure.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I believe we have one set of minutes tonight to approve. Are you ready to vote, Joe?
I am.
And Liz?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I'd take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes dated August 24, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is to consider the request of Bertucci's Restaurants, LLC, doing business as Bertucci's Brick Oven Restaurante, 90 Derby Street, Hingham for a change of manager. I believe Adam Remeca is on the line with us today. Adam, are you there?
Yep, here.
And my apologies if I mispronounce your last name.
That's okay. It's often. No worries.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us a little about your application tonight and what you're asking us to do?
So I've been working at Bertucci's for about six months now. I was transferred up to the Hingham location, and they had lost their general manager recently. So now I'm the most senior manager at the restaurant. So I'm on the change of manager application for physical licensing purposes.
Great. Let me just ask, Tom, any issues expressed from the Police Department with respect to this application?
Nope, Chief is on the line, but nope, we're good to go.
Chief, I didn't see you there. Chief, any concerns with this application?
Good evening, Bill. No, I have no concerns with the application.
Great. Let me turn it to my colleagues for questions. Liz?
I don't have any questions or concerns. The application looks complete, and I've reviewed it. Thank you.
Joe? I've reviewed it. There's a query review here, and I'm satisfied.
Great. With that, then, any questions for the public? Seeing none, I'd take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of Bertucci's Restaurants, LLC, doing business as Bertucci's Brick Oven Restaurant, 20 Derby Street, Hingham, for a change of manager from Soraya Rosa to Adam Remeca, in accordance with the application for change of manager filed with the Town of Hingham on July 19th, 2022, subject to the approval of the Alcoholics Beverages Control Commission.
Second. Motion made in second, is there need for further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor by roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. Adam, thank you and good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is to consider the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Friends of Hingham Cemetery, Inc., for a night of music with Christine Courten, to be held at Ames Chapel on Thursday, September 22nd, 2022, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I believe John Davenport is going to make this presentation this evening? John, good evening.
Yes.
You know, John, if you could just state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Yes, it's John Davenport, address is 63 Bruden Avenue. And I'm the president of the Friends Cemetery, and this event will be in exactly the same format as we've had prior events with different singers. It's a trio, small trio, a singer, songwriter, I think she has a guitarist and a bassist with her. And the same format as we had done in the past two years. We've always had an event like this with different performers. We expect the audience of about 90 people. For a short period before the start of the concert, people can come down to the cellar underneath where there's the wine and beer and things to eat available. Then during the concert, there won't be any drinking or there won't be any serving of beer at all, beer or wine or anything. They come back for as long as maybe half an hour afterwards to meet the performers, and that's it, home by 10:00. And we've never had a problem. We had two tips trained bart- one myself and one other tips trained bartender serving. And the first time we've done this, the place with fire raised, quite rightly raised questions about fire protection and parking and other issues, and we satisfied those issues, and everything was going to be exactly the same as before.
John, thank you very much. Let me see, since we do have the benefit of Chief Jones on the line. Chief, can you tell us if you've reviewed the application and you have any concerns?
Good evening. Yes, I have reviewed the application. I don't have any concerns, like Joe said, that the event did repeat what he's done before. There's no issue with any of those events of these health already, so I have no issue with the application.
Great, thank you. Let me see if my colleagues have any questions. Joe?
I've reviewed the application. I do have a question, I'm not sure to whom to direct it. I do not see a certificate of insurance as part of the application, and I thought that it was typically part of the application, or am I incorrect in that regard? Chief, you may know better than anyone here.
I don't know. We have not, I was told that was not mandatory. We have not had any special policy. We have a liability policy for the cemetery as a whole, but we have no, had not in the pack or any prior events had any special insurance, and have not been told that we had to-
And I'm not saying you have to, I'm just noting that in the other applications we do have this evening, there are certificates of insurance there, and I just don't know if it's typically required or if there's a reason it would not be. Tom or Michelle?
I think it may be because the other one's on town property, so there's a note on this application of if it's on town property, we need a certificate of insurance naming us as an additional insured.
Got it. So that would be the reason why. Other than that, I've reviewed the application, and I do think it makes good sense. Thank you.
Liz?
I've also reviewed the application. If the chief has no issues with detail or parking, I'm comfortable with it.
No issue at all. The event ran very smoothly. There was no impact on local businesses when they ran their events before.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any, does anyone from the public have any questions about or concerns regarding this application? All right, seeing none, I'd take a motion.
I move to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Friends of Hingham Cemetery, Inc., for a night of music with Christine Courten, to be held at Ames Chapel on Thursday, September 22nd, 2022, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion made in second, is there need for further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. Hey, John, best of luck with your event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is to consider the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Eat Well, Inc., for the fireworks fundraiser to be held at the Beach House on Saturday, September 10th, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And I believe we have Greg with us today?
Yeah.
Greg, come on up. How are you? Good to see you. Okay, if you come up to the podium and just state your name and position for the record.
Hi, I'm Greg Essara, owner of Eat Well, Inc.
Greg, good to see you. Can you just tell us a little about the event, so the public's aware of it? We looked at the application, but any information you can provide?
Yeah, this is a reschedule of the July 4th fireworks that is going to happen on September 10th. There's a bunch of festivities going on during the day down in the harbor, and then the Lions Club wants to rent out the space at the new community room down in the harbor, and we're going to be serving food, and we're hoping to get a beer and wine license to serve during the event.
Great. Chief, I know that you've done a lot of work on this application. Can you tell us about any concerns or issues you may have?
Absolutely. So we did work on this extensively today, and the plan that we've come up with with Eat Well allows for the people who are consuming alcohol to stay in a protected area outside as well as inside the building that he was just mentioning. There'll be one point of access, and people will monitor people coming in and exiting, so there won't be any alcohol leaving that security area. And the doors will be monitored inside and closer with emergency exit doors only, so that people will not use the doors under the public balcony there, or porch, rather, to exit the venue with alcohol.
So Chief, just to be clear, so individuals can go out on the deck area, and is there going to be like a fence there or something to kind of mark the perimeter?
Exactly. So that deck area that the lights are on to will be cordoned off by metal fencing, and there'll be one access point there. It will be staffed during the entire event, recording only registered guests that have approved to come in, and then if anyone's leaving, they'll make sure they're not leaving with any alcohol.
Great, Chief, thank you. Liz, any questions?
So this is a ticketed event, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, so no one from the kind of general public will be trying to enter?
No.
Right? Okay. Do you have any concerns about parking, Chief?
I don't. We'll have satellite parking. We'll have the sign boards up for the fireworks anyway, so it'll be limited parking at the site itself, but Station Street is available a lot down there.
Okay, great, great. No other questions? We're excited. Fireworks are back.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes, fireworks are back. Thanks for being here. Is there someone from the trustees who's going to be at the event and responsible for it, monitoring it?
I can't speak for the trustees, but I myself will be there to operate the catering.
Where I'm going is when, I was on the zoning board at the time that this whole thing was permitted, and one of the requirements was that the trustees are responsible for events here. I didn't know if, what your arrangement was with them.
Personally, I'm unfamiliar with that agreement between the town and the trustees, so I'd be remiss-
Okay, so-
...to make a comment to that point.
It's not an agreement, it's actually a special permit that was issued for use. And one other provision of the special permit is that these types of functions need to be private functions, not open to the public. So it sounds like that's what this is going to be. Is that right?
Yes, it's a pre-purchased ticketed event.
So the ABC, they've got three conditions for a private event, and those are it has to have a host, which I think that's going to be the Lions. It has restricted access to invited guests only, and the third is not publicly advertised. Those are the three conditions for an event to be considered a private event. So I just want to make sure that those are being satisfied here.
Yes, those conditions are all being met.
Okay, great. And will there be a connection between the Snack Shack and the events where liquor will be served?
Well, I own the concessions at the Snack Shack, so we'll be preparing the food in there, serving the food, and then the beer and wine will be in the community room area.
Right. And again, the reason I'm asking is that there's a restriction that the Snack Shack cannot be involved in sale, consumption of alcohol. So I just want to make sure that that's going to be respected.
Absolutely not. It's an interesting story that I couldn't get under the Beach House insurance policy. I couldn't get liquor liability insurance because I don't have a liquor license.
Right.
So we went to Eat Well, which, you know, they're all tips trained, and we have the liquor liability insurance. So that's the direction we had to go with that.
And I assume we all know that there's not a rain date for this? This is, there's one night, and hopefully it all works out?
Let's hope it doesn't decide to rain one day this summer on the-
Through finally having the fireworks. Right, exactly, okay.
Right.
No other questions? Thank you.
Anybody from the public have any questions or comments? All right, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Eat Well, Incorporated, doing business as Tosca, for the fireworks fundraiser to be held at the Beach House on Saturday, September 10th, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The applicant will comply with all conditions imposed by the police and/or fire chief and all other applicable laws and regulations.
Second.
Yep. Can I interrupt? Can I, I was made aware that the time changed from 6:00 to 4:00. It's 4:00 to 9:30 now.
Oh, it's 4:00 to 9:30. Oh, okay. We didn't know that.
Yeah, I apologize. I just learned that earlier this afternoon. My apologies.
That's okay. All right.
So Liz, would you entertain a friendly amendment to change the times from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.? That work?
It does.
Yes.
All right. So the motion has been amended. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries.
Before you do that, we just approved the amendment, now we actually have to vote on the motion.
Okay. Then is there a motion?
Yep, it's already been moved and seconded.
All those in favor by roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. Again.
Yes. The procedure's here.
Robert Trules-
Double approved. Thank you.
Just two points before we go, Greg. Beach House has been a great addition to the harbor.
Yes.
I mean, the food is wonderful.
I'm sorry?
I said the Beach House has been a great addition to the-
Oh, thank you, thank you.
It's, the food's wonderful.
Thanks.
I think it's really added.
Have you had the burger?
I've had them all. Yeah, it's great. I've had the tacos, the burger, I've had the, yeah, it's been great. So that's, so it's going great, so thanks for that. And also, as Liz said it earlier, but thrilled the fireworks are back. I know a lot of work has gone into that, from the Lions, the volunteers, the town. I'm going to mention this in my update, but it's going to be a great day, a great event, and thrilled the fireworks are back, so thanks to everybody putting that together.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg. Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider the issuance of a limousine license to Amro Warda, doing business as Bostonian Car Service, Incorporated. Sir, come on up. Can we come to the podium and just state your name and address and tell us about your application?
My name is Amro Warda, and I'm applying for license for limousine, or a letter of no objection, to run a limousine service. My address is 14 Bees Cove Road, Hingham, 02043.
Great. Excellent, well, welcome this evening. And have you, well, before we do that, Chief, are you involved with the approval of these requests? I believe that you are.
We are. So we reviewed, yeah, sorry, we reviewed the application, and we also do a vehicle inspection, both of which have been satisfied.
Great, thank you. And how many years you've been doing this, sir?
Like 15 years.
15, great, awesome. Great, well, good to have you here tonight. See if anybody has any questions. Joe?
No, I've looked at the application. Looks complete. Thank you for doing this.
Great. Liz?
Yes, no questions. I saw the inspection pass as well as the query, so it looks complete. Thank you.
Great. Anybody from the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd take a motion.
Before, I just have a question.
Yes.
I think it's probably for Tom. For how long is this license good for?
I believe they are renewable each year.
Okay, great. Thanks.
All right, I'd take a motion.
I move to approve the issuance of a limousine license to Amro Warda, doing business as Bostonian Car Service, Inc., effective through December 31, 2022, in accordance with the application for a limousine license filed with the Town of Hingham on August 16, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. Sir, good luck. Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Take care.
Can I have coffee today or tomorrow?
We'll give you tea tomorrow.
If you come in and see Sharon in my office, she'll have it for you.
Later on or now?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning. Yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Cloud Harbor and Associates, LLP, to provide engineering consulting services for the reconstruction of the Cronin Field Street Hockey Court. And I see Kathy Riley on the line. Kathy, good evening to you.
Good evening.
There we go.[1656.33]
And I see Kathy Riley on line. Kathy, good evening to you.
Good evening.
There we go.
Can you tell us a little about this agreement?
Sure. At this past town meeting in April 22, we, the town voted for money from CPA funds for reconstruction of the street hockey court at Cronin Field. And in a separate article, they voted to support redoing the tennis courts at the high school. So the same thing, reconstructing them. So Mark Thorell, the director, the recreation director, suggested that we talk to John Faris, when he was at the school at the time, to discuss perhaps doing the engineering part first and then subsequently, when the bid document is ready, doing the same, a single procurement with the schools because it's the same post-tension concrete, it's called, as it approached to building courts. And so we met with John several times. We drafted an RFQ. And we, he left, but by the time we got the responses back, we had two responses and we evaluated them with Ayesha, who is now in that position at the schools. In the RFQ, we definitely delineated the fact that although we're going to use one engineer, that it's really two projects in the sense that we're doing this contract only for the street hockey court. And the school committee will be addressing the same thing, the tennis courts on their side. So their funding is separate from ours, that sort of thing. But it really was a good way to save time and not have two construction projects with different vendors and that sort of thing. So that's what this one is. And then once the school, once, if this board approves it and the school committee approves it, then Mark will start meetings with the vendor and get going on the design and all the specifications. There are some, I understand, we met with Emily Metworth and a few other people. And I understand that we will need some GPA technical things and probably come before some boards to be able to get everything, all the plans set. And then we'll go up to bid, again, one invitation for bid, two contracts as a result of it. And then hopefully by, right after tennis season, so at May-June, the project will start. It's slated to start. I'm not sure if we know which one goes first, that sort of thing. But so we'll, anyway, they expected to only take through the summer. So by the fall, and when everyone is back to school, they should both be done.
Great. My memory is that we put those, that, we put the, I saw the street hockey courts in probably the mid-'90s. So I think they're due to be done. I know that the street hockey courts and the basketball courts at Cronin get a tremendous amount of volume. You know, I see kids skating on there a lot, people playing basketball on those courts all the time. So definitely due for, due for the work. So thank you, Kathy. Liz, any questions?
You're welcome.
Yes, just a couple clarifications, Kathy. The street hockey, it's going to be in the same location as it is currently, correct?
Yes, exact location.
Okay. And it's covered by CPC funds, this design, engineering, and the construction, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so the design, will that start sooner or will that also wait till after?
Yes, as soon as both committees, the board and the school committee approve it, Ayesha and Mark will have a meeting with the vendor to start talking about getting going on the, you know, the specifications and the, you know, whatever the process is that they do to start a design.
Okay. And then the construction will be in the summer. I'm assuming it's more efficient to do both of them at the same time?
Right. And they really were concerned about the tennis, you know, the tennis courts at the high school being available during the season. So and timing-wise, it seems to make sense, I guess, with the industry and what they have to do to construct it. So yes, and they'll also, the engineering firm that you're looking at right now will be creating the bid documents too, specifications and things like that. So it's really obviously necessary. And the, both of those courts, I think, both sets of courts were in the field study that was done a few years ago and recommended. So that's why it was on town meetings here.
Great. Excellent. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Joe?
Yes, just a couple questions. Are the prices locked in on these contracts? Because I know, we all know, there's inflation going on and we're talking about work happening a year from now. Are the prices locked in now?
Yes, the prices are locked in. I think there may be a section in the back of their proposal which may have said what might not be covered. You know, so I'm guessing if they had to hire some consultants that they didn't think they would need, they might come back to us, that sort of thing. But all of the, from the design, all the way through to overseeing the construction and finishing it, is in that price.
And what, how do I put this? What provisions are made when, so when the construction's happening? So kids are not going on and to play on the fields while they're in construction? With, you know, is there safety issues? I mean, how was that being addressed?
That's a good question. I imagine that the contractor who has to do it will be responsible for securing the sites, just like they typically are in any construction site. So I imagine that will be written into the construction specifications, that that'll be a responsibility of the contractor.
Look, maybe it was there. I didn't see that as part of the RFP. I didn't know if that was a responsibility.
Well, this is only for the engineering services.
Ah, okay.
And write the specifications for the actual invitation for bid for a contractor. They can specify that kind of requirement of fencing or, you know, some sort of, whatever the engineer say is the best way to do it.
So I guess I can ask Bill this question. Where will they, where will kids go if they want to play if these are unavailable?
If they want to play street hockey, they can, they can probably go to one of the schools to use, you know, they could do that or they can do what I do. If they live in a nice neighborhood, they can kind of just play on the street. When the cars come, they can move it back and forth. It's safe to do that.
Great. Okay, thanks. No other questions.
All right. Any members of the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I take a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Cloud Harbor and Associates LLP to provide engineering consulting services for the Cronin Field Street Hockey Court in an amount not to exceed $51,035.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm as well. The motion carries. All right. We're going to, next item is to consider approval of the agreement with Williamson Electrical Company Incorporated doing business as Williamson Pump and Motor for the Green Bush Sewer Pumping Station Control Panel Replacement Upgrade System Controls. So Kathy, if you could tell us a little about this one as well, that'd be great.
Sure. I can speak to the procurement that we did. It's a, we did a request for quotes from the state contract for trades. It's a fairly limited amount of vendors that are able to do this. They're in the pump and motor business, as far as we could tell. And Williamson has done business for the town before. And so they ended up, they were the only bidder on this. Is that correct, Matt? Right. They were the only bidder on this. They didn't have any competition. But Matt can speak to what they're actually doing, what the work is.
Great. Matt, good evening. How are you?
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Could you just state your name and position for the record?
Matt Cale, Assistant Superintendent in DBW.
Great. Matt, could you just give us a little more background to add to Kathy's remarks?
So this is for the new control panel. The control panel's been existing since the installation of the MBTA structure. It's seen some fatigue and wear due to how the cabinet is and where it's located. So in this project, we're addressing some issues that have come up to try to put in a better working product.
Great. Matt and Kathy, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's all.
Great. Thank you. Let me see if anybody has any questions. Joe?
Yes. Doing this work, do we need any clearance, approval, permissions from the MBTA?
No, we're not. Anything that is considered infrastructure or infrastructure. Everything is town property that we're working on.
And is any of this work funded by the MBTA?
No, this is strictly funded by the sewer rate base.
Got it. Well, thank you for your work here. No other questions.
Liz, any questions?
I was just going to ask about the timeline. Do you expect the work to start immediately? It looks like they want to be done, or we want them to be done by the end of the year?
So we have worked with the company in the past, so we have good rapport with them. So I believe they've already worked on the necessary components for the control panel. It is extensive. If you saw the proposal of all this, everything that goes in, it is quite a bit. But they've started that process and we have not yet heard of any major delays or issues.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Great. Any members of the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I take a motion.
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Williamson Electrical Company, Inc., DBA Williamson Pump and Motor for the Green Bush Control Panel Replacement Upgrade System Controls in an amount not to exceed $82,999.10.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm as well. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Williamson Electrical Company Incorporated doing business as Williamson Pump and Motor for the Walton Cove Sewer Pumping Station Pump Number One Replacement. So Matt, since we got you online, can you tell us a little bit about this, this application?
Yeah, so this is that I'm following up pump tube replacement, which we did last year. This is part of our 25-year capital improvement program that we're involving with our engineering group. We're putting in a more efficient and safer pump in general. The pump's going to be able to move a lot larger if we ever actually have major floods in the Walton Cove area. We don't lose pump or impose a massive penalty with the station with this pump. And also eliminate drive shafts that are just dangerous to be around in general. So there's some nice parts to this, including the sewer system in the right direction. I saw these benefits.
Matt, thank you. Kathy, anything to add?
No, it's actually very similar to the other one. We used the state contract for trades for pump and motor services. And we had one other vendor come and look at it, but declined to bid. So same thing, Williamson was the only bidder. And so here we are.
Thank you. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Joe? I actually have Liz's question from the prior contract, which is as to the timing. This is, looks like worked through July 31st. Why the difference in the timing in the two projects?
Oh, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Yes.
Williamson, on this pump specifically, they're one of the main suppliers for barge in the region. So they have access to stock. So when we had decided to go with the barge pump, they already had someone in.
So that explains the timing.
Yeah, they're able to move a lot faster because they have, they already have a pump.
Okay, got it.
So is it supposed to be July 30?
Yes, it would have to be of 2023.
2023. That's right, right? Okay.
And so just one final question. Did you intend a really good pun when you said this is moving the sewer in the right direction?
Do the value count?
Very clever.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I take a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrators to sign the agreement with Williamson Electrical Company Incorporated doing business as Williamson Pump and Motor for the Walton Cove Sewer Pumping Station Pump Number One Replacement in an amount not to exceed $82,726.53.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor by roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm as well. The motion carries. Matt and Kathy, thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, next item on the agenda are appointments. And we do have a vote tonight regarding appointments. Joe, would you like to make that motion?
Sure. I move that the select board does hereby ratify the appointment of those election workers on the attached sheet, which appointments were made by the town administrator under the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 54, Section 12, in accordance with a delegation of authority from the select board to the town administrator under the provisions of Section 2C of Chapter 263 of the Acts of 2016.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm as well. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Anybody from the public have any, anything like to say tonight?
I think we're looking at the public.
I don't see anybody else on Zoom. Okay. All right, moving on to our last agenda item is town administrator select board reports. So let me turn to Michelle.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Tom?
Just wondering how many hours a young chairman spent on the ice, on the street hockey.
Lots.
Lots of hours. There wasn't a rink, right? It was in the street.
That's right, that's right.
Bradley Woods, we used to move him back and forth and a lot of great memories of growing up in that neighborhood.
No, no reports tonight. Thank you, Bill.
All right, select board reports. Liz?
I just wanted to thank Mark Thorell and his team for a successful summer. The Hingham Rec has served nearly 4,000 children in summer camps to end tomorrow. It's the final day before school starts. So well done to the rec department and rec commission. Thank you.
Several of those 4,000 children were the Ramsey children. My daughters, this week, so thank you, Sam. Joe?
Nothing this evening.
I just have a couple quick items. First of all, on Saturday, September 10th, we are planning a celebration of our harbor and the town of Hingham. And there are a lot of great events planned for the harbor that day. And I know more information will be coming out about what those events actually are. But as we spoke this evening, the evening is going to culminate in fireworks. So we're thrilled that the fireworks are back. But the entire day and event is going to be a fantastic celebration of our community. So my appreciation to all the great work that the volunteers are putting into making that happen. Also, we received some wonderful news this morning from the MSBA. We learned that with respect to the William L. Foster Elementary School project, that the maximum total facilities grant may increase to as much as $25,118,559. So this is great news that the MSBA voted to support our project and that the project is moving along toward our vote and discussion, and further discussion of the project in the coming weeks and in the fall. So that's great news. And lastly, I just want to note that we do not plan to meet next week, but we will have a pretty long and detailed meeting on the 13th. And one of our agenda items is going to be further discussion of the financing of the potential projects in the fall and other potential events coming this year. So tune in for the 13th. And with that, I take a motion to adjourn.
I move for adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm as well. Everybody has a great Labor Day weekend and see you in a couple weeks. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.